Good afternoon. Thank you for taking time to join us for Denver City Council's meeting. Today is Monday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Tonight's meeting is being interpreted into Spanish. Sam or Jasmine, would you please introduce yourself and let us know how to enable transition on your devices?
Yes, of course. Thank you for having us. Hello, everyone. My name is Sam Guzman with the CLC, joining you virtually through Zoom. And along with my colleague Jasmine, we will be interpreting today's meeting into Spanish. Please allow me a quick minute while I give instructions in Spanish on how to do this interpretation. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Samuel Guzman con la CLC. Justamente con mi colega Jasmine estaremos interpretando la reunión de olla en español. Si se une con nosotros virtualmente a través de Zoom, por favor, busquen su pantalla un icono del globo que dice "interpetación" o oprime ese botón y de ahí seleccione la opción de escuchar en español. Si se une con nosotros presencialmente y está ahorita en la cámara, por favor, busquen hacia el fondo hacia la derecha y encontrarán un asistente que le podrá dar audífonos para poder escuchar en español. Muchas gracias and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Sam. Welcome to the Denver City Council meeting on Monday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. Council members, please join Councilmember Watson in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Councilmembers, please join Councilmember Watson as they lead us in the Denver City Council landmining.
The Denver City Council honors and acknowledges that the land on which we reside is a traditional territory of the Ute, Cheyenne, and Abbo peoples. We also recognize the forty-eight contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado. We honor elders past, present, and future, and those who have stewardied this land throughout generations. We also recognize that government, academic, and cultural institutions were founded upon and continue to enact exclusions and erasures of indigenous peoples. May this acknowledgement demonstrate a commitment to work and to dismantle ongoing legacies of oppression and inequities, and recognize the current and future contributions of indigenous communities in Denver.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, welcome. Councilmembers Sawyer?
Here.
All visitors?
Here.
Slim?
Here.
Gilmore?
Gonzales Gutierrez?
Here.
Heinz?
Here.
Cashman?
Here.
Lewis? Parry? Ramara Campbell?
Here.
Torres?
Here.
Hey, it's a little back. We're back again.
Ten members present. We have ten members present. Council has a call. Approval of the minutes. Are there corrections to the minutes on November seventeenth? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Council announcements. Are there any council announcements this afternoon? Councilmember Slim, why don't you start us off?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I wish happy Thanksgiving to folks in Denver and anyone else watching. With the holidays approaching, my office is doing once again our annual toy drive for children in southwest Denver in cooperation with Southwest Denver Coalition. And if you are able to participate, we would love to see you in the Bear Valley Shopping Center in my council office on Saturday, December sixth, so two Saturdays from now, between eleven AM and two PM, the Bear Valley Shopping Center, the far east end at Darnithan Yates, behind the closed car wash. It's a local landmark. And we're asking a new unwrapped toy, any age up to eighteen. The volunteers at Southwest Denver Coalition will take them and put them in categories, you know, boy, girl, age zero to five, et cetera. And they will wrap them and they will assign them to families who are identified through Denver Public Schools in southwest Denver. We've done this every year for Cassandra and the Southwest Denver Coalition and had great success and hope people respond again this year. That's Saturday, December sixth, between eleven and two, there will be music, there will be free hot dogs, chips, and hot drinks. And I understand that the Denver Firefighters Union will bring out the antique fire truck. So bring the kids along and climb over an antique fire truck. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Watson?
Thank you, Council President. We lost two musical legends this past week. There's legendary Purnell Steen and Jamaica's and West Indies' legendary Jimmy Cliff. Purnell Steen was a Denver and Five Points legend. His legendary jazz band, Purnell Steen, and the Five Points ambassadors hosted shows as recently as this past summer at Cousins Plaza adjacent to Blair Caldwell Library. He was a storyteller, a musician, a US Army veteran, a lover of people, food, his family, and always a lover of Five Points. His music and legend lives on. We want to thank you, Purnell Steen, and your family. God bless you and your family in this time, and thank you for the years and years of service to our community. And then for Jimmy Cliff, was born in Jamaica. As the story goes, he along with Toots were credited for coining the term reggae. He was one of two reggae artists inducted into the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. For West Indians, he was our John Lennon. He introduced the world to Bob Marley. His soulful "Many Rivers To Cross" became a worldwide anthem, not just in the West Indies, but throughout the world. I give blessings to his family.
Yeah, we're doing a toy drive.
Everything I know, we not know, he's just liming fucking heaven with the other greats. So blessings to him, his family, and to everyone else that loves reggae. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Watson. In northwest Denver, we are having a holiday lunch at Oslon Rec Center. It's for anyone fifty and up. If you'd like to join, it's free. They're gonna have bingo. It is Thursday, December twelfth, from ten thirty to two, and Oslon Rec Center is at forty-four thirty-five Navajo Street. And I'd also just like to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I hope everyone has a really good holiday. I'm glad that our federal government is back up and running. And when I think about some of the things that I'm thankful for, I'm thankful for all of you, the residents of Denver, and being able to serve in this role as council president and the councilperson from the north side that I love with every fiber of my being. So with that, we'll no more seeing no more. Tonight, we have the People's Budget Presentation. Let's welcome Kiki Turner, Denver's participatory budgeting program. And Kiki, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Councilmembers and Council President. I'm very excited to join you tonight. Kiki Turner, the Denver People's Budget Program Administrator. We have reached a milestone in the city's participatory budgeting program called the People's Budget. So I am joined here today by a handful of incredible community leaders, and we'd like to share out just a little bit about what's been happening and what is to come with this exciting program. So over the last several months, this group of community members has been working hard to create an actual guidebook to inform how the people of Denver will be allowed to spend two million dollars throughout the next year. So this group came together to create nine, to come to consensus on nine different decisions. They certainly won't go through everyone tonight, but I'll send the link out to the guidebook, which is now published on our website. And we wanted to feature just a few of the kind of medias decisions that they made. So there's a group of about thirty residents from all parts of Denver. We have a significant chunk from the near southeast areas of Denver because a special million dollars will be going just to those neighborhoods over the next year. We have residents from north, south, east, and west Denver, of all ages, and their youngest start about fifteen, all the way into their seventies. This group of community members has different backgrounds, different perspectives, and they had the challenge of deliberating and having tough conversations to decide what's important for them and what's important for their neighborhoods. They took very seriously the fact that, you know, two million dollars will be coming into their communities, and they worked together respectfully but passionately to make some decisions about how those dollars will actually go out the door. So I wanted to highlight just a few of these most crucial decisions. One of the activities this group did was decide, once we actually get projects coming in, you know, residents will start brainstorming ideas as of tonight. We have to narrow down that list. We got hundreds and hundreds of ideas last year. So our community steering committee identified certain project criteria that will go onto a rubric. So next spring, after we have our new batch of ideas, thanks to the steering committee, it'll be a rubric with five different scoring criteria, including wellness and safety, long-term impact and intentionality, accessibility, diversity, equity, inclusion, and respect and dignity. So I think those are the values that this group felt were most important to them and could actually be used to score projects. So with those criteria, I think we are bound to get a really great handful of projects onto a community ballot come next fall. Which brings us to the biggest decisions this group makes. We reset the scale every year with People's Budget. We recognize that democracy and values are constantly changing and evolving. So we want our community members to decide who should have a meaningful role in civics and in their government. So they are asked who can submit ideas, project ideas, who can take those ideas and develop them into proposals, and who will actually get to vote on the ideas at the end of the process. We talk about sort of traditional voting and civic standards, and then ask them what they think makes most sense for this process and for their communities. So they said that anyone who considers Denver their community is allowed to submit an idea in this process, which makes a very inclusive approach. We're excited and we're sure we'll get a variety of creative ideas because of that criteria. Then when it comes to developing those ideas, you have to be eight or older and live, work, or go to school in Denver to be what's project delegate and actually build out specific proposals. Finally, the last stage, when people get down to voting, anyone of any age and any immigration status or incarceration status is allowed to vote. You just have to live, work, or go to school in Denver to complete a ballot. So that means they'll be able to go into schools, we'll go into the Denver County jails, and we'll go to communities all across Denver to let people have the chance to have their voice heard on a community ballot. We will have two ballots as well, so a million dollars will go anywhere, and we have those criteria for anyone in Denver. But the same criteria apply to the near southeast. So there'll be a special ballot, and you have to live, work, or go to school in the near southeast communities to vote for those dollars. So that was quite a bit of work, and stopped there. We then asked them what the ballots should actually look like. I know this body has talked a lot about different voting systems. We also discussed different voting systems. We actually got a mock-up of types of voting options. We went through a first-pass-the-post process, as well as a rank choice process. The committee had the opportunity to vote for different covers of their guidebooks, play around with the different voting systems, and they chose for the third year in a row now to do a ranked choice ballot. So this will be the only process within Denver that uses ranked choice, but it's worked really well for us the last couple of years. And the committee felt strongly it lets people really speak their values and explore different levels of favoritism across projects. So the ballots will be ranked choice next year, which is quite exciting. So those are the heftiest decisions, but this, I'm happy to sort of reveal the guidebook for cycle three. This is on our website, and we have our hard copies for our community members here today. I wanted to just take a quick moment to recognize all the members who've worked so hard on this process. They're really our community leaders and champions throughout this entire process. So if our committee members are here and are willing and able to stand up and be recognized, we would love to just give you a quick round of applause. And up next, as of tonight, we will open the idea collection process now that their rules are in place. So your offices will be getting emails from me with share kits and information about how that can be spread out. But this fantastic group of communities behind me will have the chance to drop the first ideas of cycle three. And oh, it's possible one of the ideas submitted tonight could start being funded and constructed as early as the end of next year. So thank you very much for the time for the presentation.
Yeah, they may show a show. Hold on.
Thank you all. It is a great project and love the People's Budget. I'd like to see what comes out of it. Are there any other comments by councilmembers for the People's Budget?
Councilperson? Thank you, Madam President. Thank you again for the time that you spent on this. We are super excited to have the near southeast area plan done and also to be able to get the input from the folks that live, work, or play and go to school, right? In the area. It's very exciting. I just want to thank you all again for taking the time. I know that you came all from all over the city and traveled a distance to be able to get to the meetings every week. So I just wanted to thank you, Kiki, for running such a great process, and I look forward to sending that out in our newsletter. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. There are no communications this afternoon. There is one proclamation being read. Councilmember Heinz, would you please read the proclamation in nineteen seventy-three?
Thank you, Council President. Proclamation twenty-five dash nineteen seventy-three, honoring the Denver Foundation's one-hundredth anniversary, nineteen twenty-five to twenty-twenty-five. Might just pause for one second. Actually, they are very quietly filing out, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue. Honoring the Denver Foundation's one-hundredth anniversary, nineteen twenty-five to twenty-twenty-five. Whereas, in nineteen twenty-five, a group of public-minded Denver citizens founded the Denver Foundation as a new kind of community chest to support the greater good by pooling and growing charitable funds, making it one of the first community foundations in the nation. And whereas, the Denver Foundation received its first gift in nineteen twenty-seven, donation of a thousand dollars from the local philanthropist J.K. Mullin, which paved the way for the Foundation's first grant to Denver's community chest, today known as Mile High United Way, launching a legacy of investing in Denver's needs. And whereas, over the past century, the Denver Foundation has grown into Colorado's oldest and largest community foundation, with its assets expanding from that initial one thousand dollars to more than one point four billion dollars stewarded today. And whereas, fueled by the generosity of donors, the Denver Foundation has connected philanthropy to impact on an unprecedented scale, receiving over two point one billion dollars in contributions and awarding more than one point five billion dollars in grants to nonprofits across metro Denver and beyond, supporting over thirteen thousand unique community organizations to date. And whereas, the Denver Foundation's focus has continually evolved to meet the community's changing needs, supporting social services, education, and health in its early years and later concentrating on areas like economic, wait for it, economic opportunity and basic human needs. While today, the Foundation centers diversity, equity, and inclusion in all its work, striving for a metro Denver where leadership, prosperity, and culture are racially equitable and actively working to reduce racial disparities. And whereas, the Denver Foundation has invested in future generations through initiatives such as its scholarship programs, including the Reichers Scholars Program, which since two thousand and one has awarded nearly thirty-nine million dollars in scholarships to help more than two thousand four hundred students earn college degrees and is on track to become Colorado's largest private scholarship fund. And whereas, in celebration of its one-hundredth anniversary, the Denver Foundation is giving back to the community through special centennial initiatives, investing in projects that promote equity, education, and community well-being, including major improvements at La Russa Park, sponsoring Free and Community Days at the Denver Zoo and the Denver Museum of Nature and Science, supporting the immersive Jurassic Oceans exhibit at the museum, and funding a new children's playground at the Denver Zoo's Wild Village. And whereas, the city and county of Denver has joined in honoring this milestone by eliminating the Denver and City County Milling and Teal, the Denver Foundation's signature color, and officially declaring November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, as the Denver Foundation's Centennial Celebration Day in the city and county of Denver. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Denver City Council, Section One, that the Denver City Council hereby designates November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, as the Denver Foundation's Centennial Celebration Day in Denver. Section Two, that the clerk and recorder of the city and county of Denver shall affix the seal of the city and county of Denver to this proclamation.
Thank you, Councilmember Heinz. Your motion to adopt?
I move that proclamation twenty-five dash nineteen seventy-three be adopted.
It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Heinz?
Thank you, Madam President. Getting to my notes, as the city council representative for District Ten, I am especially proud that the Denver Foundation calls our district home. I've had the privilege of visiting their offices on multiple occasions, and each time I've been struck by the, figuratively, struck by the passion and warmth of the people there. The Foundation isn't just a financial institution or grant maker, it's a gathering place for people who believe Denver's potential to work, or Denver's potential, and work every day to help our neighbors thrive. You can feel the century of compassion and commitment in their halls. It's clear that for the Denver Foundation, being part of the community isn't just in the name, it's in your DNA. For one hundred years, the Denver Foundation has connected generosity to impact, supporting thousands of organizations and countless individuals across our city. We heard the incredible statistics in the proclamation, more than one point five billion dollars in grants to over thirteen thousand organizations. But behind these numbers are real lives changed and communities strengthened. One longtime community member and past board chair, I was actually wondering if he was gonna be here today, known as Brother Jeff, Mr. Jeff Fard, captured it perfectly when he said, "What makes the Denver Foundation special is what makes humanity special. Individuals who are willing to give their time, their treasure, their expertise, their resources to shape a world where everyone can live in and enjoy a particular quality of life." That's what's beautiful about the Denver Foundation. It's the people, it's the spirit, it's the intent, and it's the dedication of work on issues that matter. That inclusive, wholehearted spirit of giving is at the core of the Foundation's legacy and impact. One thing that moves me about this centennial milestone is how the Denver Foundation chose to celebrate by giving back to the community. Instead of just throwing a party for themselves, they invested in their neighbors, funding major improvements at La Russa Park, the other events that I had talked about, including Free Community Days at the Denver Zoo and the Denver Museum of Nature and Science. And
Shout out to the viewers.
You know, at any point, most organizations might be receiving gifts. The Denver Foundation is busy giving gifts to the people of Denver.
Yeah, they're trying to look inclusive.
That speaks volumes about their values, a reminder that their mission has always been about lifting others and making our city a better place for everyone. Even as we celebrate a century of achievements, the Denver Foundation is clearly not resting on its laurels. They've launched an ambitious centennial campaign to raise a hundred million dollars in endowed funds, ensuring that they can make an even greater impact over the next century. It's a promise that future generations will have the resources to meet whatever challenges come our way. As Denver Foundation's president and CEO has said at the anniversary celebration, "The story of Denver Foundation is your story," meaning this legacy belongs to all of us in this community. Today, we honor not just an institution, but all the people who've built it over the past one hundred years and those who will carry it forward. On behalf of District Ten and the city of Denver, thank you to the Denver Foundation for a century of hope, generosity, and impact, and here's to the next one hundred years. I'll be asking for you to come up with a comment. Not yet, we have to vote first, but when you have a moment, please tell us how we can support that next century of giving. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Heinz. Councilmember Gonzales Gutierrez?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to congratulate the Denver Foundation and your one-hundredth anniversary, and really congratulations to the people of Denver as well. Thank you for your ongoing partnership to ensuring that critical services are received and the resources that are needed by the people in our city, they are able to access those because of the partnerships that you have with the various nonprofits and/or community organizations. With these organizations and partnerships, you work with us, you work with the city, to make sure that you're addressing urgent needs, as we have seen them come up way too far, way too often with this current federal administration. Most recently, the need to continue to address our food insecurity in our communities for making sure that we're funding services, crucial services, like the Denver Immigrant Legal Services Fund. These are things that our community, they come up sometimes urgently and fast, and you've all been able to rise to the challenge and meet the moment when called upon. I'm grateful for your collaboration and commitment to the Denver community. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres?
Thank you so much. I didn't get a chance to write down all my comments. You're gonna get me off the cuff. Thank you so much, Councilmember Heinz, for bringing this forward, and congratulations to the Denver Foundation, Avian. Thank you so much for your leadership. It's been really amazing to watch you do such good work with such joy and heart in Denver, and that bleeds into your entire team and your Board of Trustees and every relationship that your team have out in the Denver community. It's seen, it's recognizable, it is a measure of trust that takes years to build, and so thank you all for taking that so seriously. There are two areas of programming that I just wanted to highlight. My colleague mentioned the Denver Immigrant Legal Services Fund. This was one where Denver Foundation was not the first organization that was going to partner with, it was going to be our partner in distributing this funding. The first one didn't work out. Denver Foundation came back and said, "We can do this." And we laid out kind of a governance and a grant-making process that it was crucial to have a partner on the community who could get those dollars out to organizations really quickly. And it's been a huge difference-maker for folks. It is a ten to twelve times difference-maker if you're represented by an attorney to winning your case. And so I thank you for being our partner in making sure that our families get that kind of representation. The other is in the giving circles. I think Denver Foundation so beautifully shares the story that everyone is a philanthropist and that the power of consolidating your small dollars with my small dollars can have a huge impact in community. I was part of Letting Us Give when it was first created, and then watching Colorado Asian American Pacific Islander Circle, Denver African American Philanthropist staff, Latinos Impacting Our Future Together Lift, and Women of Color Making a Difference. These are, I think, one of the ways that we embrace this action, but it's not an unfamiliar thing in our communities. We've called them tandas in a number of Latino, Latin American kind of circles where you give a little bit and you're gonna get to benefit of it this year. Next year, I will, but we are all going to kind of consolidate gifts that we have to really help with our entire community, and that's what these giving circles demonstrate. To see Latinos fund these organizations that are able to do the next thing and the next thing and the next thing is a really beautiful thing to see and be a part of. So thank you for lifting up our community in those ways, and it's never for the Denver Foundation, it's always for those people that you serve. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Watson?
What the fuck? This office is a whole legal firm.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and thank you so much, Councilmember Heinz, for bringing this forward. I remember in two thousand, when I first joined in Denver Foundation as a member of the Board of Trustees, I was initially part of the Strengthen Neighborhood initiative prior to becoming the Strengthen Neighborhood Program. And from that moment of great work that your Strengthen Neighborhood Program did for Eastside communities to ensure that we had small grants to lift up and elevate the ideas that we had within our communities, of how to build our communities, you have been a community partner, not just to us on Eastside, but also throughout the city and county of Denver. My husband and I have a Denver advisor with you, and our plan giving is given through the Denver Foundation. And how is that possible? To elevate the ideas of families throughout the city and county of Denver, providing them the opportunity for stewardship, for leadership, but also to allow them to give in ways that they can continue giving to and through their retirement, to improve their lives, the lives of the communities that they support. You are so unique in that process, and truly a community foundation, elevating us and our ability to be involved in philanthropy and giving us the means and the systems to be able to deliver to communities that we love.
Give me the number four.
And the Denver Foundation also provides leadership and support for social impact bonds. This is essential within our community, finding innovative ways
Finding innovative ways in which community members come together to provide dollars to initiatives, to nonprofits that are doing amazing, amazing work. Community mini-grant program, helping to bring bill for our nonprofits, once again. Unique amongst foundations, unique among community grant groups. And as my colleague shared from your response for asylum seekers, your response to folks who are in the house and being one of the first partners with All In Mile High and ensuring that we had a place and space to ensure that we can make sure we're investing to those who are seeking our support as a city. Thank you all for your leadership, your continued work with us, possibly in collaboration with the CISO Curtis Park as we're beginning dialogue around that. Your depth of experience, your impact in communities is greatly appreciated. And I know personally, in my life, in the work I've done in community, we greatly appreciate you and the ways that you're going to make, you're making and will continue to make a difference.
The work you've been doing in the community.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations, 100 years, it's amazing. And I just, I think it's tremendous when you think about the Denver Foundation and what you always bring to the table. So, it's not, it is a lot about, you know, this collective and coming together and being able to give back to community, give back to projects and programs that are so critical to our health and wellbeing. But you do it with education, you do it with thought leadership, you do it with a wide variety of topics and weave them in. And I think a leader amongst others within the philanthropy community, a leader, you know, amongst others here in Denver, but also around the country. Like, I think about, I'm looking at you. But really bringing that thought leadership. I mean, you know, I spent my career in the nonprofit field and in philanthropy and have had the honor of working with many of you. But I really just want to congratulate you for bringing this forward. Councilman Watson talked about strengthening neighborhoods, and that was over 20-plus years ago. How you took that opportunity and created something that was so unique and so special and really have led a field of how to engage with residents, how to engage with smaller organizations to be able to access dollars in a different way, to be able to find that magic within community that really does shift and change how we interact is really commendable. So, I look forward to your next 100 years and I look forward to continuing to partner with you in the future. So, thank you for all that you do and thank you all for the time that you spend because it's a lot of hard work that goes into the Denver Foundation. So, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Albiere.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you all so much for being here. Thank you, Councilwoman Hines, for bringing this. 100 years, wow, that's amazing. I had only become aware of the Denver Foundation in the past few years, probably along the time when you started doing the Immigrant Legal Services Fund, which is so meaningful. But I just want to thank you for doing all the work that you do and Naomi for spending time here with us too and answering my calls when I have questions about nonprofits in my community. Even this weekend, I was texting you and asking you about questions. And your understanding of the city is so valuable to me. And so, I really appreciate you all being a resource. Even when we started talking about the soccer stadium and there was a CBA conversation, you were one of the few people that I could call and ask, like, "How do I get funding for a CBA? What do you recommend?" And you've been an invaluable resource for me. So, thanks personally, thank you so much and for our community as well. And I think advocates as well for the people of the city of Denver. Even when we may not be aware of what their needs are, you can come to us and tell us what you're experiencing on the ground, and that's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. So proud to have your support. I know that you helped support La Raza Park, which is near and dear to my heart. It's like I call it my favorite project. Having a park called Columbus Park on Navajo Street was something that just did not resonate with my community. And when you were able to get $2 million to be able to fix it up, you all helped fund some things that my community really dearly, deeply care about. And also, all of the other amazing work that you do, the Capacity Building, the Civic Fabric Fund, the Crucial Needs Fund, I mean, we can just go on and on and on. And I just want to call out your board chair, who's a constituent of mine, a dear friend, a huge supporter. I couldn't be more proud of your board. I was just looking at your board again. And it's really made up of a diverse group of people who love Denver with every fiber of their being, similar to everyone up here on the dais. So, between you and your board and all of the great work you all do, just can't say congratulations enough and hope that you're here for another 100 years. And however we can be supportive, please know that you have a friend on City Council. See no other comments or questions? Madam Secretary, local? Councilmembers Sawyer? I. Alvidres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Hines?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, Cruz Vodin, Nancy Faizal? 10 ayes. 10 ayes proclamation, 1973, has been adopted. Councilmember Hines, you now have time for the proclamation acceptance. Who'd you like to call up?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call up Denver Foundation President and CEO Javier Soto. And tell us how we can give. We take credit cards, we take checks. Councilmember, thank you so much for calling us in this way and all to all the members of the council, really blown away by your comments and your respect, your regard, your love for the Denver Foundation. Thank you so much. This means a great deal to us for you all to recognize this on our 100th birthday. And I do want to mention, I'm joined by our board chair, Lisa Ramírez, our vice chair, Peter Kirsch, as well as members of our staff, including city and county alumni and our CFO, Margaret Danuser. Throughout these past 100 years, with the city of Denver and all of you, we've been key partners in the work of building a greater, more thriving community, work to improve the lives of all who live here. So, thank you for 100 years of partnership. And we'd love for you all, council member, in response to your question, to continue to think of us. When you see a need in the community that you think that the Denver Foundation could step in and partner with you on to improve the lives of those who are being affected by that particular issue, please think of us and please invite us into your districts and let us know how we can be doing more and doing better work in each of your districts. The key to the success of a community foundation is to be grounded in community at the very hyper-local level. And that's what we seek to do each and every day. You all are more connected at that hyper-local level than anyone. So, please call on us and let us know how we can do better. From 1925, our founding board came together around this shared vision to pull together public and private and corporate funds into what was called then a community chest. Today, we call an endowment. And that endowment was meant to grow and to support this community forever, not just for 100 years, but the next 100 and beyond that. We were, as Councilmember Hines said, one of the first community foundations in the country. And over the past 100 years, we've had great moments of impact and celebration. We've also faced some headwinds. Through a World War, economic crises, and a global pandemic, the Foundation has been there to help meet the moment. And just a few weeks ago, when 600,000 Coloradans lost access to food benefits, we worked at the city and others to support Maui, United Way, Food Bank of the Rockies, and other food assistance programs in metro Denver to meet that moment. And we anticipate that there will be headwinds again in the future. In order for us to be well-positioned to meet those headwinds, charitable foundations like ourselves, like our nonprofit partners, must continue to have the freedom we have always had to direct resources in alignment with our values. In this moment, we need leadership that helps to bridge divides and unites community rather than sow further division. So, for the Denver Foundation, this means continuing to support the issues most important to the community and help people across all backgrounds, all geographies, all beliefs. So, together with the city of Denver and our partners in philanthropy, we'll remain focused on creating equitable change that makes our community better. Again, thank you so much for helping us to celebrate 100 years of the Denver Foundation. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam Secretary, please read the bills for introduction from the Finance and Business Committee, 25-1766, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed development project funding agreement. Brookfield lots located at 1505 Glen Arm Place and 1518 Glen Arm Place, Denver, Colorado, between the City and County of Denver and Denver Downtown Development Authority and Council District 10. 25-1767, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed development project funding agreement. Denver Pavilions located at 516th Street, Denver, Colorado, between the City and County of Denver and Denver Downtown Development Authority and Council District 10. 25-1768, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed land acquisition ordinance between the City and County of Denver and the Florida Avenue and Quebec Way Mini Roundabout Project, designating certain properties as being required for public use and granting the authority to acquire through negotiated purchase or condemnation all or any portion of any property interest as needed for installment. From the Governance and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, 25-1843, a bill for an ordinance approving the mayor's nomination and confirming the appointment of Elise Tocles to the Board of Affairs. From the Parks, Art, and Culture Committee, 25-1753, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed intergovernmental agreement between the City and County of Denver and Town of Morrison for a license fee permitting the city of Denver to manage traffic through the Town of Morrison related to event traffic at Red Rocks and Mountain Parks. From the South Flat River Committee, 25-1704, a bill for an ordinance approving accepting the park building plan for the maintenance and operations facility, equipment building, and the storage building, all located in the city of Cuernavaca Park pursuant to the provisions of Section 39-210 and 39-211 of the Denver Revised Municipal Code. 25-1727, a bill for an ordinance assessing the annual cost of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and the replacement of the Broadway Pedestrian Mall B Local Maintenance District upon the real property exclusive of improvements theron benefited. 25-1728, a bill for an ordinance assessing the annual cost of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the Phase II Broadway Pedestrian Mall Local Maintenance District upon the real property exclusive of improvements theron benefited. 25-1730, a bill for an ordinance assessing the annual cost of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the South Broadway Streetscape, Arizona Avenue to Iowa Avenue Local Maintenance District upon the real property exclusive of improvements theron benefited. 25-1732, a bill for an ordinance assessing the annual cost of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the South Broadway Streetscape, Iowa Avenue to Wesley Avenue Local Maintenance District upon the real property exclusive of improvements theron benefited. From the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, 25-1722, a bill for an ordinance assessing the annual cost of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the St. Luke's Pedestrian Mall Local Maintenance District upon the real property exclusive of improvements theron benefited. 25-1723, a bill for an ordinance assessing the annual cost of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the South Downing Street Pedestrian Mall Local Maintenance District upon the real property exclusive of improvements theron benefited. 25-1724, a bill for an ordinance assessing the annual cost of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the expanded Gretna Pedestrian Mall Local Maintenance District upon the real property exclusive of improvements theron benefited. 25-1725, a bill for an ordinance assessing the annual cost of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the West 32nd Avenue Pedestrian Mall Local Maintenance District upon the real property exclusive of improvements theron benefited. 25-1726, a bill for an ordinance assessing the annual cost of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the Broadway Pedestrian Mall Maintenance District A upon the real property exclusive of improvements theron benefited. 25-1729, a bill for an ordinance assessing the annual cost of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the consolidated Morrison Road Pedestrian Mall Local Maintenance District upon the real property exclusive of improvements theron benefited. 25-1731, a bill for an ordinance assessing the annual cost of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the South Broadway Streetscape, Wesley Avenue to Yale Avenue Local Maintenance District upon the real property exclusive of improvements theron benefited. 25-1733, a bill for an ordinance revenging an easement in its entirety, establishing the permanent non-exclusive easement recorded with the Denver Clerk and reporter, reception number 2017140937, located at 2100 South Josephine Street. And 25-1833, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed second amendment to the agreement between the City and County of Denver and Allied Waste Systems of Colorado LLC, allied to extend the party's closing date associated with the previously approved property exchange, wherein the city and allied will exchange certain property as set forth in the agreement. You can take a breath, that was a lot. I was very impressed. All right, councilmembers, this is your last opportunity to call out an item. Councilmember Watson, will you please make the motion for us this evening?
Yes, Council President.
Now, I will do a recap. Under Resolution, Council Resolution 1818 has been called out for a vote by Councilmembers Gonzalez Gutierrez. Council Resolution 1748 has been called out for questions by Councilmember Alvidres. Council Resolution 1770 has been called out for questions by Councilmember Alvidres. Council Resolution 1814 and 1815 have been called out for postponement pursuant to Rule 3.6 by Councilmembers Gonzalez Gutierrez. And Council Resolution 1789 has been called out for a vote by Councilmember Alvidres. Under Bills for Introduction, Council Bill 1753 has been called out by Councilmember Alvidres for questions. And Council Bills 1726, 1727, and 1728 have been called out for an amendment by Councilmember Alvidres. Under Bills for Final Consideration, Council Bill 1714 has been called out by Councilmember Alvidres for a vote. And Council Bill 1634 has been called out by Councilmember Flynn for a vote. Under pending, no items have been called out. Madam Secretary, please put the first item on our screens. Council Resolution 1818, a resolution approving a proposed fifth amendment between the City and County of Denver and La Raza Services, Inc., to provide care, treatment, and support services for individuals living with HIV AIDS in the Denver Transitional Great Grant Area. Councilmember Watson, would you please put Council Resolution 1818 on the floor for adoption?
I move that Council Resolution 251818 be adopted.
It has been moved and seconded. Common consensus, Council, Councilman Gonzalez Gutierrez. Thank you, Madam President. I call this out so that I can abstain for this vote. Thank you, Madam Secretary. I will call on Council Resolution 1818. Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Alvidres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez? Abstained. Hines?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, Cruz Vodin, Nancy Faizal? 9 ayes. 9 ayes, Council Resolution 1818 has been adopted. Council Resolution, Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Resolution 1748, a resolution approving a proposed master purchase order between the City and County of Denver and Hartling.com LLC to provide Flagstone Piece of Rock Awards that are presented to the artist and crew who perform at Red Rocks Amphitheater, CDW. Councilmember Alvidres, please go ahead with your questions on Council Resolution 1748.
Thank you so much. I believe I see Mr. Bowman in the audience. I did get a chance to ask my question, I did get a chance to ask my question, but I was hoping to get it in an email afterwards. Um, but my understanding is that this nine hundred thousand dollars for these awards is normally made up for in the cost of additional awards purchased. Can you just confirm that for me? Yeah, and please introduce yourself when you come up.
Good afternoon, I'm Ted Bowman, I'm the venue director for Red Rocks Amphitheater in the Denver Coliseum for Arts and Menus. And yes, the Piece of the Rock Award is an award that got started back in the late nineties. In fact, uh, the first recipient was John Tesh, if anybody is a John Tesh fan. So, so the way it's worked, and this is a, this is a commemoration for those artists, the headliners that play up at Red Rocks for, uh, they're, you know, coming to Red Rocks and perform for our, our fine city. What happens is, we will provide one of those awards for each, uh, of the headliner acts. And then the promoters or the attendants of the, of the venue will purchase the additional one. So of that nine hundred thousand, uh, over the next five years, uh, really, we're paying, how about five percent of that, the rest is being recouped from the promoters for each show.
Great, thank you, that was my only question, thank you, Council President, I appreciate you. Thanks for all the work you do at Red Rocks.
Thank you. Um, seeing no other comments, Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Resolution seventeen seventy, a resolution approving a proposed fourth amendment between the City and County of Denver and Hilltop Securities, Inc. for municipal financial advisory services to the city. Councilmember Alvedres, please go ahead with your question on council Resolution seventeen seventy.
Uh, thank you so much, Council President. My questions for this one are for, uh, the Department of Finance. I'm curious, when does the Department of Finance choose to involve Hilltop Securities on the decisions that they're making, recommending?
Hi there, Ross Cooney, Department of Finance. So per DOF's, uh, debt policy and DRMC, section twenty dash ninety, we do require FA for all issuances. So we start that process with Hilltop during the pre-plan phase, phase all the way through execution of an assurance.
Um, I appreciate that, and so when they provide advisement, is there actually documents, financial modeling, capacity analysis, market evaluations, and official opinions that they provide?
Uh, not official opinions, but yes, they provide analysis, strategies, recommendations, such as, you know, on, uh, independent financial strategies, advice, uh, overall approach to city financings, um, developing, evaluating financial strategies, uh, debt service, estimated debt service schedules, things of that nature.
So did they provide this type of documentation when we purchased the Denver Post Building?
At least so, yes.
Okay, was that shared with council?
So, pardon me?
Was that shared with council?
So it's, it's, it's a internal, independent, uh, analysis. Um, we certainly can provide some analysis that was done on, on the Denver Post.
That would be great, I would appreciate that, um. That was my main question, so we can ask for that in the future, it's good to know that that's happening. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Resolution eighteen fourteen, a resolution approving a proposed contract between the City and County of Denver and Live Nation Revive, Inc. for commission payments for events using assorted venues for arts and menus located starting in twenty twenty-five through the end of the year, through end of the year twenty twenty-nine in Council Districts nine, ten, and mountain parks. Councilmember Gonzalez Gutierrez, what would you like to do with council Resolution eighteen fourteen?
Thank you, Council President, I would like to postpone consideration of this resolution for one week pursuant to Rule three point six.
Thank you, no motion is required. Council Resolution eighteen fourteen has been postponed for one week to the next regular council meeting. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Resolution eighteen fifteen, a resolution approving a proposed contract between the City and County of Denver and AEG Presents Rocky Mountain Mall LLC for commission payments for events using assorted venues for Denver arts and venues located starting twenty twenty-five through end of year twenty twenty-nine in Council Districts nine, ten, and mountain parks. Councilmember Gonzalez Gutierrez, what would you like to do with council Resolution eighteen fifteen?
Thank you, Council President, I would like to postpone consideration of this resolution for one week pursuant to Rule three point six. No motion is required. Council Resolution eighteen fifteen has been postponed for one week to the next regular council meeting.
Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Resu- Council Bill seventeen fifty-three, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed development project funding agreement, Brooks Lofts located at fifteen oh five Glen Arm Place and fifteen eighteen Glen Arm Place, Denver, Colorado, between the City and County of Denver and the Down- Denver Downtown Development Authority in Council District Ten. Councilmember Alvedres, please go ahead with your questions on council Bill seventeen fifty-three.
Thank you, Council President. Seventeen fifty-three, I think linked to the wrong thing, because on my screen it says the Town of Morrison, and that's what I believe I meant to call out, and I think there was a problem administratively on the link.
Hmm, Madam Secretary?
Which item would you like to call out? Seventeen fifty-three, which is not to do with Glen Arm, it's to do with the Town of Morrison.
Okay. A bill for an ordinance approving a proposed intergovernmental agreement between the City and County of Denver and Town of Mor- Morrison for a license fee permitting the city of Denver to manage traffic through the Town of Morrison related to event traffic at Red Rocks and Mountain Parks. Go ahead with your questions on seventeen fifty-three.
Great, thank you, um, my question again is for Mr. Bowman. Um, I was able to speak to you earlier, but wanted to confirm, um, since I didn't get it in writing, that because the Town of Morrison no longer has a police department, we are providing those services, and that ultimately goes to the cost of the promoter, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah, the Town of Morrison disbanded their police department this year, and we had paid them for their traffic services. Uh, this now allows us the right to send our DPD guys down there, uh, which all gets paid for by the show directly.
That's great, eh, just out of curiosity, and if you don't know, that's fine, um, is it actually a reduction in cost for us to be doing it ourselves than it was for us to be paying Morrison to do the traffic control, or is it an increase?
It's a slight reduction from what the agreement was before, but, uh, betw- betwe- between the DPD officers that are down in the town, and then the fee that we're paying for the right to be there, it's, it's fairly close. But again, the promoters and the shows are paying, uh, both of those items.
Great, I learned a lot today, so thank you, thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screen. Council Resolution, Council Bill seventeen fourteen, a bill for an ordinance amending, amending ordinance nine fifteen, series of twenty twenty-five, concerning the Downtown Development Authority Fund. Councilmember Watson, would you please put council Bill seventeen fourteen on the floor for final passage?
I move that council Bill two five one seven one four be, uh, adopted.
No. Uh, be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
Be placed upon final consideration, yes.
Thank you, it has been moved and seconded, comments by members of council, councilmember Alvedres.
Um, I just wanted to say again, I'm just gonna be voting no on this one because I don't feel, um, totally informed on moving our authority, so.
Okay. Seeing no other comments in the queue, Madam Secretary, we'll call on council Bill seventeen fourteen. Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Nay.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman? Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting, announce the results. Nine ayes. Nine ayes, council Bill seventeen fourteen passed. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill sixteen thirty-four, a bill for an ordinance amending Denver Revised Municipal Code sections ten through sixteen concerning the building and fire codes. Councilmember Watson, we, would you please place council Bill sixteen thirty-four on the floor for final passage?
I move that council Bill two five one six three four be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
It has been moved and seconded, comments by members of council, councilmember Flynn?
Thank you, Madam President, I called this out to vote no on it, as I did last week on publication, because as, as I looked at it and considered all the input, um, I don't see much potential for increasing housing, but I do see potential for increasing, uh, risk, and so I wanted to vote no, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call on council Bill sixteen thirty-four. Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting, announce the results. Nine ayes. Nine ayes, council Bill sixteen thirty-four has passed. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill seventeen twenty-six, a bill for an ordinance assessing the annual cost of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the Broadway Pedestrian Mall District A upon the real property exclusive of improvements thereon benefited. Oh no, that sounded weird. Councilmember Watson, would you please place council Bill seventeen twenty-six on the floor for publication?
I move that council Bill two five one seven two six be ordered, published.
It has been moved and seconded, um. Councilmember Alvedres, your motion to amend?
I move that council Bill twenty-five dash seventeen twenty-six be amended in the following particulars. On page one, line twenty-nine, strike subsection D and replace with D, the Broadway Denver General Improvement District has been organized in accordance with ordinance number nine one seven, series of twenty twenty-five, and as such, the GID shall assume responsibility for the annual costs and continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the Broadway Pedestrian Mall A. And on page one, line thirty-two, strike the subsection E and replace with, due to the organization of the GID, the Broadway Pedestrian Mall A one will have no further responsibility for the annual costs of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the Broadway Pedestrian Mall A. Two, will be sought to be determined and dissolved by the executive director of the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure. And three, will assess no amount against the real properties exclusive of improvements thereon benefited within the Broadway Pedestrian Mall A in twenty twenty-six. Three, on page two, strike line one through three. Four, on page two, line seven, strike section three and replace with, section three, as the GID shall assume responsibility to pay for the twenty twenty-six annual costs of the continuing care, operation, repair, and maintenance and replacement of the Broadway Pedestrian Mall A, and the Broadway Pedestrian Mall A may otherwise be terminated and dissolved upon the successful organization of the GID in accordance with ordinance number nine one seven, series of twenty twenty-five. No amount shall be assessed against the real properties exclusive of improvements thereon benefited within the pedestrian, Broadway Pedestrian Mall A in twenty twenty-six. Five, on page three, strike lines one through twenty-three and six. On page three, line twenty-four, strike the word section six and replace with the word section four.
Thank you, it has been moved and seconded, comments by members of council on, on the amendment to council Resolution seventeen twenty-six. Councilmember Alvedres?
Thank you, Council President, um, I'm excited to bring these changes forward as the General Improvement District for South Broadway did pass at this most recent election. It was a huge win for Broadway, and one of the things that people should know is that people were paying fees for the pedestrian malls, which was causing problems along Broadway. There was trash cans on one block, but not on another block. There was maintenance happening on one block and not on another, and so, um, these fees will be dissolved and replaced by the GID fees, and in some cases even save people money. So it's really exciting, thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, we'll call on the amendment to council Bill seventeen twenty-six. Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman? Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting, announce the results. Ten ayes. Ten ayes, the amendment to council Bill seventeen twenty-six has passed. Councilmember Watson, would you please put council Bill seventeen twenty-six on the floor for publication as amended?
I move that council Bill two five one seven two six be ordered, published as amended.
Um, I don't think, thank you, councilmember Alvedres, seeing you making other comments, this is just putting it on the floor now, no, thank you. Um, Madam Secretary, we'll call on council Bill seventeen twenty-six as amended. Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting, announce the results. Ten ayes. Ten ayes, council Bill seventeen twenty-six has been ordered, published as amended. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill seventeen twenty-six, a bill for an ordinance assessing the annual cost of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the Broadway Pedestrian Mall B Local Maintenance District upon the real property exclusive of improvements thereon benefited. Councilmember Watson, would you please place council Bill seventeen twenty-seven on the floor for publication?
I move that council Bill two five one seven two seven be ordered, published.
It has been moved and seconded, councilmember Alvedres, your motion to amend?
I move that council Bill twenty-five seventeen, twenty-seven be amended in the following particulars. One, on page one, line thirty, strike subsection D and replace with D, the Broadway General Improvement District has been organized in accordance with ordinance number nine one seven, series twenty twenty-five, and as such, the GID shall assume responsibility for the annual costs of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the Broadway Pedestrian Mall B. And two, on page one, line thirty-three, strike subsection E and replace with E, due to the organization of the GID, the Broadway Pedestrian Mall B, one, will no further responsibility for the annual costs of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the Broadway Pedestrian Mall B. Two, will be sought to be terminated and dissolved by the executive director of the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure. And three, will assess no amount against the real properties exclusive of the improvements thereon benefited within the Broadway Pedestrian Mall B in twenty twenty-six. Three, on page two, strike lines one through three. Four, on page two, strike line seven, strike section three and replace with, section three, as the GID shall assume responsibility for the, responsibility to pay for the twenty twenty-six annual costs of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the Broadway Pedestrian Mall B, and the Broadway Pedestrian Mall B may otherwise be terminated and dissolved upon the successful organization of the GID in accordance with ordinance number nine one seven, series of twenty twenty-five. No amount shall be assessed against the real properties exclusive of the improvements thereon benefited within the Broadway Pedestrian Mall B in twenty twenty-six. Five, on page two, strike lines thirty-seven through forty-one. Six, on page three, strike lines one through five. Seven, on page three, line six, strike the word section six and replace with the word section four.
Thank you, well done. It has been moved, I think. Madam Secretary, motion? Yep. It has been moved and seconded, um. Comments by members of council, councilmember Alvedres?
Uh, this is the same case that I just stated, so.
Awesome, thank you. Madam Secretary, we'll call on the amendment to council Bill seventeen twenty-seven. Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting, announce the results. Ten ayes. Ten ayes, the amendment to council Bill seventeen twenty-seven has passed. Councilmember Watson, would you please put council Bill seventeen twenty-seven on the floor for publication as amended?
I move that council Bill two five one seven two seven be ordered, published and amend, as amended.
Thank you. Um, seeing no other comments, Madam Secretary, we'll call on council Bill seventeen twenty-seven as amended. Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman? Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Ten ayes. Ten ayes, council Bill seventeen twenty-seven has been ordered, published as amended. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill seventeen twenty-eight, a bill for an ordinance assessing the annual costs of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of Phase Two Broadway Pedestrian Mall Local Maintenance District upon the real property exclusive of improvements thereon benefited. Councilmember Watson, would you please, would you please place council Bill seventeen twenty on the floor for publication?
I move that council Bill two five one seven two eight be ordered, published.
It has been moved and seconded, councilmember Alvedres, your motion to amend?
I move that council Bill twenty-five seventeen twenty-eight be ordered, published. Oh, that was already done, sorry. I move that council Bill twenty-five seventeen twenty-eight be amended in the following particulars. One, on page one, line thirty, strike subsection D and replace with D, the Broadway General Improvement District, GID has been organized in accordance with ordinance nine seventeen, series twenty twenty-five, and as such, the GID shall assume responsibility for the annual costs continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the Phase Two Broadway Pedestrian Mall. And two, on page one, line thirty-four, insert a new subsection E, which states, it's E, due to the organization of the GID, the Phase Two Broadway Pedestrian Mall one will have no further responsibility for the annual costs of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of Phase Two Broadway Pedestrian Mall two will be sought to be determined and dissolved by the executive director of the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure. And three, will assess no amount against the real properties exclusive of improvements thereon benefited within Phase Two of the Pedestrian Mall in twenty twenty-six. Three, on page two, line four, strike section three and replace with, section three, as the GID shall assume responsibility to pay for the twenty twenty- section three, as the GID shall assume responsibility to pay for the twenty twenty-six annual costs of the continuing care, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of Phase Two Broadway Pedestrian Mall. And the Phase Two Broadway Pedestrian Mall may otherwise be terminated and dissolved upon successful organization of the GID in accordance with the ordinance number nine seventeen, series twenty twenty-five. No amount shall be assessed against the real properties exclusive of improvements thereon benefited within the Phase Two Pedestrian Mall in twenty twenty-six. Four, on page three, strike lines one through thirty-four. Five, on page four, strike lines one through thirty-four. Six, on page five, strike lines one through eleven. Seven, on page five, strike line twelve, strike the word section six and replace with the word section four.
Nice, thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Albi, there is?
Again, another pedestrian mall being dissolved for the GID.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call on the amendment to Council Bill seventeen twenty-eight. Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Albi, there is?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Ten ayes. Ten ayes. The amendment to Council Bill seventeen twenty-eight has passed. Councilmember Watson, will you please put Council Bill seventeen twenty-eight on the floor for publication as amended?
I move that Council Bill two five one seven two eight be ordered, published as amended.
Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Bill seventeen twenty-eight as amended. Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Albi, there is?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Parity? Sorry, Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Ten ayes. Ten ayes. Council Resolution seventeen twenty-eight as amended has been adopted as amended. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Resolution seventeen eighty-nine, a resolution of city council consenting to the mayor's appointment of Al Gardner as the manager of safety.
Vote no!
Councilmember Albi, there is your motion to postpone?
Vote that motherfucker, no!
Actually, we're not going to postpone because it would require a vote, so we'd have to vote.
Right.
So I withdraw the motion to postpone.
Damn.
Okay. Did that conclude the items to be called out?
I would like to just make comments, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Albi, there is your comments on seventeen eighty-nine to the mayor's appointment of Al Gardner as the manager of safety.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge that a few other of my colleagues also reached out to call us out. And unfortunately, are not able to be here, but I personally have not been able to have my meeting with Mr. Gardner, so I will be abstaining from this vote today. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the items to be called out. All bills for introduction, Madam President?
Yes.
We'll have to have a vote on that so that Councilmember Brody is going to abstain. Oh, okay, so we do have to have a vote. We have to move for it to be adopted. Councilmember Watson, can you please, on the floor for publication, or what do I do? Motion for adoption. Can you please put Council Resolution seventeen eighty-nine on the floor for adoption? Is that right? Kind of fine.
I, I move that two five one seven eight nine, and there is no script for this, so move to the floor for adoption.
Perfect. It has been moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Resolution seventeen eighty-nine. Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Albi, there is?
Abstain.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman? Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Nine ayes. Nine ayes. Council Resolution seventeen eighty-nine has been adopted. This concludes the items to be called out. All bills for introduction are ordered, published. Councilmembers, remember that this is a consent or block vote, and you will need to vote aye. Otherwise, this is your last chance to call out an item for a separate vote. Councilmember Watson, will you please put the resolution for adoption and the bills on final consideration for final passage on the floor?
I move that the resolutions be adopted and bills on final consideration be placed upon final consideration and do pass in a block for the following items. Series twenty-five, one four five four, one seven eight eight, one seven nine three, one seven nine four, one seven nine seven, one seven nine eight, one seven nine nine, one eight one nine, one five four nine, one five five zero, one five five one, one seven four eight, one seven four nine, one seven six nine, one seven seven zero, one seven seven five, one seven seven seven, one seven nine zero, one eight zero one, one eight zero two, one eight zero three, one eight zero four, one eight zero five, one eight zero six, one eight zero seven, one eight zero nine, one seven three four, one seven nine one, one eight one seven, one seven four seven, one seven five zero, one seven five five, one eight two two, I'm sorry, one eight two zero, one seven five one, one seven five two, one seven five four, one six one zero, one six one one, one seven three five, one seven three seven, one seven three eight, one eight one one, one eight one two, one eight two one, one eight two two, one eight two three, one eight two four, one eight two five, one eight two six, one eight two seven, one eight two eight, one eight two nine, one eight three zero, one eight three one, one eight three two, one eight three four, one eight three five, one eight three six, one eight three seven, one eight three eight, one seven zero nine, one seven one zero, one seven one one, one seven one two, one seven one three, one seven one five, one seven one six, one seven one seven, one eight one three, one six three three, one six three seven, one six zero seven, one six one two, one six two zero.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, roll call. Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Albi, there is?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman? Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Ten ayes. Ten ayes. The resolutions have been adopted and the bills have been placed upon final consideration and do pass. On Monday, December first, twenty twenty-five, council will hold a required public hearing on Council Bill seventeen oh four approving and accepting the park building plan for the maintenance and operations facility, equipment building, and storage building, all located in the city of, all located in the city of Cornobaca Park pursuant to provisions in section thirty-nine through two-ten and thirty-nine through two-eleven of the Denver Revised Municipal Code. There being no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned.
Alright, so it's recess for like nine minutes. These motherfuckers just gave fucking Al Gardner a fucking appointment. Oh my god. Oh, so sickening. Yeah, some bullshit. As you know, I'm gonna keep this stream going though, because it's almost time for general public comment. I don't know, I'm actually in the stream now. Come back in ten minutes. I'll see y'all in ten minutes. Peace.